All right, good evening and welcome to our monthly meeting. We're gonna have the invocation by Pastor Dr. Tim Hoska of Christ Church Tabernacle in Jonesboro. And we're gonna do a little something different because it's Veterans Month and we appreciate our veterans. Can we get a round of applause for our veterans? And I'm gonna ask if Mr. Jack Lucas would lead us in Pledge of Allegiance after the prayer. If you would, please stand with me.
Thank you, sir, for this opportunity to do this. Father God, we come before you and ask you that you bless this meeting tonight, that the protecting hand of God be upon this facility where we are and everyone that speaks in here tonight. Father, in the Book of James, chapter 1, verse 5, you said, "If any man lack wisdom, let him ask of God that giveth to all men liberally." And we ask you tonight to release liberal wisdom in this place. Father, that decisions that are made are made with supernatural wisdom from heaven. And we ask you to protect us and keep us with all the mayhem that's taking place around the world. We ask you, Father, to let this nation be protected. You said you would give your angels charge concerning us, and we ask you for angelic protection in this season, on this meeting, on this county, and on this nation. Father, make a difference and let Clayton County be an example of the peace, the lack of crime. Lord, to the whole world, that you can move amongst people and cause them, Father, to come into unity and to love one another and lay aside malice and hate and anger. And we ask that the unity and the great success begin tonight in this house. And Father, that we have not ought against one another, but we figure out the best solutions to the problems, to fix what needs fixed in our community so that we can move along into great success. And Lord, you said that you would give us power to bind on earth and to loose on earth. So tonight, I bind the spirit of murder that's loose in our country and suicide and crime, and I command it to be halted so that not another family member has to be in sorrow, grieving, of a senseless act of violence. Father, we ask you to give us power, Lord, to come to unity in prayer together, that your hand will be loosed in our lives and that all this craziness that's happening around us would stop. We ask you to bless this community, let it have great success, let it be seen by the eyes of favor of many that are to come and to invest money into this community. Father, let them come from the east and the west and the north and the south and from all directions. Lord, let them bring finances and deposit them here, that we can live in the blessings of God that maketh rich and addeth no sorrow to them. And Father, we'll thank you for all this and all the wisdom that you're giving us in the precious name which is above every name, the name of Jesus. We ask this in Jesus' name. Amen.
Present arms. Pray to lead us to the pledge of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening and welcome to the November 20th, 2018 regular business meeting. The first sort of business is the adoption of the agenda. Does any member want to offer any amendments?
Yes, Madam Clerk, I would ask that Resolution 2018-119, dealing with the MEGS study, be removed. There's still some questions that need to be answered. Is there a second?
A second.
Any questions? Those in favor, aye. Opposed? Issue unanimous.
Are there any further amendments? Herein none, may we have a motion to adopt the agenda with the approved amendment?
So moved.
Is there a second?
A second.
Those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Issue unanimous. And before we go to the next item on our agenda, where is an acknowledgement, let me say this, this is Veterans Month, I believe November 11th. We celebrate Veterans Day. Every time I speak during this month, I always say that veterans should be honored and recognized more than just in November. We live in the world's greatest country, not one day out of the month, or not even one month, but every single day. So every day, we should be thankful to our veterans because of them and the sacrifices they have made and their families have made, we are the greatest country in the world. So with that being said, my Director of Senior Services, Tori Strauter, her and her staff, they do a wonderful job, they came to me and developed the program. So I'm gonna read what this program is about. Clayton County Senior Services will implement meaningful programs for veterans by collaborating with veterans and organizations who serve veterans year-round. Clayton County Armed Forces Senior Veterans, AFSV, was started June 22nd, 2017. The AFSV committee is comprised of senior center members who have served the U.S. military, their spouses, advocates for veterans, veterans from the community, representatives from Clayton County Board of Commissioner, Veterans Advisory Board, senior services employees who are veterans, and senior services department administration. So this program, we will ask a veteran to lead us at the second meeting of every month in the Pledge of Allegiance, in recognition of them and in honor of them. And our first recipient is gonna be Mr. Jack Lucas.
Mr. James Jack Lucas was born January 16th, 1953, in Winston-Salem, North Carolina, where he and his five siblings were reared by the late Mr. James Arthur Lucas Senior and Mrs. Louva Smith Lucas. Jack decided to join the Navy when he was 16. He was allowed to son up, but they would not let him join until January 16, 1950, his 17th birthday. He served aboard the USS Plage AM-277 from March 1950 until October 12, 1950, when at 12:36 PM in one sun Korea, the ship hit a mine and went down. The USS Pirate AM-275 went down at 12:07 PM. Apart from Pearl Harbor, this was the largest naval tragedy. Two ships sank less than 30 minutes apart. Jack received five Battle Stars, one Silver Star, and a Presidential Unit Citation for the USS Plage AM-277 and its members. Jack was promoted by Admiral C. Turner Joy, Commander of the Seventh Fleet Pacific, from Seaman First Class to Cockswing. Jack served in the Navy until 1953. He received his Associate's Degree in Applied Science from the University of Tokyo while he was enlisted in the Navy, and a Bachelor's Degree in Management from Wayne State. Jack and his wife Clara moved to Georgia and joined Frank Bailey Senior Center in 2008. Sadly, Clara died in 2014, and after her death, Jack became active as an advocate for veterans, helping veterans formally behave while continuing his work as a lifetime American Legion Member Scottish Rite Mason. Jack has been featured in a Home Depot commercial which honored him as a veteran, and he has many speaking opportunities to share his life experiences, including his time served in Korea. Jack Lucas has played a very important role with formulating AFSV, Armed Forces Senior Veterans, a planning committee whose goal is to provide meaningful programs and services for veterans year-round, not only in the month of November. Mr. Lucas felt as though senior services needed to do more to assist and honor veterans. He continually and persistently voiced his opinion regarding the matter, and AFSV began with senior services. AFSV voted unanimously to nominate Mr. Jack Lucas as the first recipient of the Clayton County Veteran of the Month Program. Congratulations.
The next one, the Georgia Recreation and Parks Association recognizes Coach Gibb Downton as the State Volunteer of the Year. The introduction will be done by Parks and Recreation Assistant Director Troy Stubbs as presented by the President of the GRPA, Mr. Eddie Cannon.
Oh yeah, thank y'all for letting us be here today. We do have Mr. Eddie Cannon here. He is our President of our Georgia Recreation and Parks Association, and he would like to say a few words before we...
Chairman Turner, it's a pleasure to see you again. Board of Commissioners, thank you for having me. Mr. Stanford, it's always a pleasure. And Mr. Stubbs, my pleasure to be in Clayton County this evening. I'm gonna reverse this just a second. I'm gonna do the second one first and the first one, okay? Clayton County has a great reputation of providing quality of life services to its citizens. I cannot say enough about the quality of staff that Clayton County has and the amazing program that the staff provides for your citizens. Troy and his leadership team are professional. They go above and beyond to provide great facilities and programs. Clayton County manages 2,300 acres of active and passive parkland. This includes over 32 parks and facilities. It takes 66 full-time employees, 71 part-time employees, and countless seasonal employees and many volunteers to keep all the facilities and programs moving in the right direction. The emphasis on training staff and new technology to do things smarter has helped the department be one of the shining examples for the state of Georgia. I cannot say enough about how the staff is involved with GRPA. There are leaders in our organization that are setting the standard for our future. It's my pleasure to present Troy and the Clayton County staff the GRPA District Four Agency of the Year Award.
May we have members of Clayton County Parks and Recreation staff, if you would, please come forward. Clayton County Parks and Recreation employees, please come forward to accept the award.
I have the pleasure of presenting a very special award tonight. GRPA each year recognizes volunteers from across the state that provide exceptional service to our local departments and the citizens that we serve. This year, we decided to go to the communities and make these presentations instead of those folks coming to our conference. It's been a lot of fun for me to travel the state and be able to make these presentations to the great volunteers that believe in parks and recreation and they believe in the services we provide to our citizen makes a difference in the quality of life in all of our communities. Tonight is no exception. In the previous presentation, I talked about the great things the staff at Clayton County are doing. Yes, I know you're proud of them, but the staff cannot do this alone. We count on our volunteers to help us. They lead activities, they make the magic happen throughout our departments across the state. Tonight, we will recognize one of those special volunteers in Clayton County. Coach Gibb knew when he was 11 years old what his passion was for the rest of his life. By the age of 18, he had mastered the art of diving and received a scholarship to the University of Evansville. In 2006, when he entered the Steve Lundquist Aquatic Center, he knew he wanted to be involved. He signed up to be a coach, and over the next 12 years, he has exceeded those responsibilities of that title and grown to be revered as one of the most valued and dedicated volunteers in Clayton County. Over the years, he has worked with divers and their families to provide scholarships when they could not afford to pay. He has provided transportation, uniforms, AAU memberships to divers when they needed help. He also makes sure everyone has a custom Tara Dive Team Bag and T-shirt. These are always presented after the diver's first meet at Dairy Queen. After each meet, he takes all members of his dive team to Dairy Queen for a special treat. That's pretty cool. Coach Gibb's team typically averages about 15 members on that team. Six of those members have qualified for AAU Nationals, and four of them have placed at Nationals. But the biggest award for Coach Gibb is that he has had many students receive admission to college via the diving scholarship. That's amazing. Coach Gibb is also vital in the department, hosting GRPA state meets, Georgia State Games meets, invitational meets, and he's also working with the GRPA Athletic Committee to reinstate the diving meet for the state. Coach Gibb truly coaches for the love of sport and the kids that participate. To make the program better, he is donating a value over $11,000 of a dry land dive training equipment system. This will allow students to practice and advance in the sport without being restrained to training in a pool. Coach Gibb is one of those volunteers that is not in this for money, but for the love of the kids and the sport he coaches. Coach truly embodies the saying, "It's better to give than to receive." It's my pleasure to present Coach Gibb Downton the GRPA State Volunteer of the Year Award.
Mr. Chairman, the board would now consider the consent agenda.
All right, is there a motion to approve consent agenda?
So moved.
Is there a second?
A second.
Those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Issue unanimous.
Items nine and 10 are zoning public hearings. The first zoning public hearing, the applicant is Carbea Nuon, and the request is for a conditional use permit to allow for a personal care home having six or more persons. The subject property is located at 1180 Mondays Mill Road, Jonesboro, Georgia. The planning and zoning staff, as well as ZAG, are recommending approval with conditions. This is District Three, Commissioner Felicia Franklin Warner's district.
Okay, is the applicant present? Please come forward.
Yes, sir, you'd like to make statement.
How you doing now? I want to extend my thanks and appreciation to this honorable board for allowing us to stand in front of you and to request our conditional use permit.
Yes, for the record, please state your name and your position, whether you're the owner.
All right, yes, sir. My name is Kabir Nuon, and...
Susanna Nuon.
Okay. So I want to thank the honorable board for allowing us to stand before you guys to request a conditional use permit for about eight people into our personal care home. I also want to extend my thanks and appreciation to Chairman Turner and Commissioner Warner for paying us a visit sometimes last year to take a first-hand look of our property. Permit me, honorable board, to move over a couple of major changes that were actually had to our home. Firstly, we did a renovation in our home. We added two rooms and a hallway to accommodate the amount of people we requesting for. Secondly, we also, although to meet the county's regulation, what we did was change from a SEPT system to a CU system. Thirdly, what we did was based on the state regulation for us to increase to have five or more people, we had to change, actually install sprinkler system into the home. Of course, we already did that. Based on the recommendation for honorable commissioner for our districts, she requested upon when you guys visited, she requested us to extend the bathroom for our clients. And of course, we did that immediately when you guys left us. We also added a shower for the caregivers into the room. We also did that. So these are the number of major changes that we actually made to our home to accommodate for the eight people we kind of requesting. At this point, I will give the floor to Susanna to further elaborate.
Good afternoon. Thank you again for allowing us to be, to stand in front of you. I just want to add a few points. Kabir has already covered most of what we did, and from our last meeting, that's what we failed to do, by explaining all the changes we made. So at this point, we were more prepared to tell you all about what we did, and again, I do appreciate your visit. That really, you know, had my heart at risk more than before. So the main reason why we are actually standing in front of you today and being fighting to get this conditional use permit approved is because we are trying to provide a better living environment for the resident that we have. There are all seniors, the youngest one is 59, the oldest is 76 years old. And the main reason we've been going through this process and pretty much spending all of our savings to do the renovations, to make sure we are up to, we're dotting all the i's and crossing all the t's to make sure we meet these requirements, is because we are trying to become our own provider through Medicare. And what that means is currently, a lot of the resident that we have, they are low income, so they have a fixed income SSI, and it's not much to be able to sustain them. And a lot of our residents do not have any family members, so we are their family. So being our own provider, we can be able to get better funding for them so that we can be able to provide more their personal needs, because currently, a good handful of our resident, their personal needs come from out of our pocket. So having this conditional use permit approved will really help us to not only improve the environment they live in, but also have more, have more opportunity to give them more things that they, you know, require to have. So thank you.
Thank you. All right, is there anybody here for or against this request? Anybody here for or against the request? Commissioner Warner.
First of all, I want to say thank you, and thank you for your patience, and thank you for going through the process the right way. I really appreciate that, and thank you for serving the community. There was, it said that with conditional, with conditions, what were the conditions, Ms. Ban? What were the conditions you were asking? Or have they already met those conditions?
Right, the only condition that we're recommending today is that they limit their residents to eight, not more than eight. They understand that the facility could hold 10, but we're conditioning them to eight since they are only proposing eight.
You're proposing eight, right? Okay. Well, it's my recommendation that we approve the zoning.
Second, the motion, any questions? Here in none, those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Issue unanimous. Thank you.
And the final public hearing for this evening, the applicant is Eco Site LLC, and the request is for a conditional use permit for the construction of a cell tower. The subject property is located at 6265 Tara Boulevard, Jonesboro, Georgia. The planning and zoning staff, as well as ZAG, are recommending approval with conditions. This is District Four, Vice Chairman Edmison's district.
Yes, sir, state your name for her.
Good evening, my name's Andy Rotenstrike. I'm here on behalf of Koschap, the landowner, Eco Site, the proposed developer of the tower, and T-Mobile will be the initial tenant on this tower. The tower will be built to accommodate additional carriers when they decide they need additional coverage in this area. The purpose of this tower is to provide bigger and better coverage for T-Mobile customers in this area. We've got a lot of traffic in this area, up and down Tara Boulevard, and with the shopping in the area. We're in a commercial area, zoned mixed use, and we're proposing a tower in the park In the parking lot of the south, south side Discount Mall, right on Tara Boulevard. There's a Dollar Tree.
I know where you're talking.
Yeah, and then it's, there's an intersection of Arrowhead.
Yeah, so you say the parking lot, so tell me more about where at in the parking lot?
Sure, may I show you on the map here?
Yes, please.
All right.
So here's Tara Boulevard and the highway, this is Arrowhead running east west here. This is the Discount Mall. I think there's about a hundred, over a hundred shops or something in the mall.
Is it open?
At the what?
Is it open now?
No, it's not. There's a Dollar Tree store here, there's a auto repair store here, Popeyes, chicken is...
I think we're familiar with the area. Where's the pole going to be located?
So inside the parking lot, we're going about where that pointer is.
Where is the pointer?
A little, right about here.
And it's right behind, what is that building there?
The Dollar Tree.
I don't see the pointer on mine, I'm sorry.
And what is the, what does the pole look like?
It's a single pole design. There are power lines running along the highway, and they're going just like that, and it'll be about the same height. It'll be a metal pole, single pole, it's not going to have the guide wires that we're used to seeing along the highway. It's not what I call the three-legged monster lattice structure that we see not far from here. It's going to be a single pole design. The FAA is not requiring that we light it because we're staying under two hundred feet, so there'll be no lights on the tower.
And it fits in with the design of the other poles in the area?
Yes, sir. There's actually a light pole, several light poles in the parking lot that are roughly ninety to a hundred feet tall, so we're going to be about twenty-five feet taller.
Will it be inside of a fencing?
Yes, ma'am. There will be a fencing area to house the radio equipment for T-Mobile, and then whoever else gets on the tower, they'll need their radio equipment, and it'll be fenced and locked.
So obviously, you wanted to put the antenna there because there's a gap in coverage?
There is.
And this will significantly increase the coverage for the people who live in that area?
Yes, sir. That's exactly the purpose.
Are there any other questions for you?
Is that the only location you could have found? That's the only thing I had.
It is. Well, first of all, we look for existing towers to hang T-Mobile's antennas on. That's the first thing we'd like to do. That's much quicker, cheaper for T-Mobile. But here, the towers that are nearby, there's about five within about a mile and a half. T-Mobile is already on all five of those. So that with that coverage, we still have the gap, and we have the capacity issue. We've got a lot of traffic going up and down Tara Boulevard, and a lot of customers going into these retail establishments, and they're all using their phones at one time. It overloads the system. So this tower will give some coverage to that middle area where we don't have it, but also provide capacity relief so we don't have dropped calls, so nine-one-one calls go through and things of that nature.
And you couldn't purchase time on one of the other existing towers outside of yours? They don't do that anymore?
We're already on that, yes. We share the towers. We're a tenant. T-Mobile's a tenant on those other towers.
You're a tenant on those, and though this one will be dedicated to T-Mobile, though?
It will, T-Mobile will be the first tenant. It will be built strong enough to allow Verizon, AT&amp;T, Sprint, whenever they're ready, they can just then hang their antennas on this pole.
And with it being such a shorter distance or height than the other ones, it's going to give you the amount of capacity that you're expecting, or y'all going to come back and want to put another pole in the parking lot?
I don't suspect, I mean, the height of the tower, really, the capacity issue doesn't need the higher height. We need the hundred and twenty-five feet here to fill in that gap in coverage and the capacity. So, you know, the other carriers will have to deal with whatever height's available on the tower, but it will give them increased coverage if they need it.
Do you have a better picture?
Of?
A better picture of the pole?
There is no better.
And their location?
I do. I can give you a drawing.
So what you're just handed is portions of the application that was submitted. If you notice, the first page is an outline of the property, just like you're seeing in blue on the screen, and the orange is the highlighted area where the tower compound will be. That'll be the fenced-in area. If you turn to the next page, Ms. Hamburg, that'll show you a general overview of what the pole will look like. So the top spot with those little antennas at the top will be for T-Mobile, and then the next three spots you see where it says potential future antennas, those will be available for other carriers. And then the next few pages show the coverage issues that I was describing a few moments ago. If you look at the next, or the last page, Ms. Warner, that'll answer your question with regard to the other towers in the area. So those are the closest towers. The yellow dot in the middle is the proposed site, and those blue and yellow circles are existing towers, and you can see the distances identified in orange. T-Mobile is already a tenant on all of those, so there is signal from T-Mobile on all five of those towers, but we still have this gap in coverage and the capacity issue. And that's why we're needing this one.
I'm sorry.
Yes, ma'am.
Is this going to be on the property of any of the businesses?
The land, it'll be in the parking lot, so it'll be on the property on by the...
Of which one?
Of the Discount Mall.
Any other questions? All right, so is there anybody here for or against this request?
Yes, sir.
Please come to the podium.
I can greatly appreciate the capacity that's needed, however, with the Old Dixie Master Plan and with that mall, is I think it's approximately a quarter of a mile down, as far as, and it's zoned right now, mixed development, I think that would be aesthetically unpleasant to look at every day, a fenced-in area with a tower, and I think it would limit potential growth as far as that piece of property is concerned. And knowing the area, there's a empty lot that sits right behind the Popeyes on the corner of Arrowhead and Tara Boulevard would probably be a better location versus this facility, this pole sitting, yeah, that location right there, instead of sitting in the middle of a parking lot. I just think it's going to be, it's going to cause those problems down the road as far as future development, and I just think it'd be an seemingly structured to look at. Thank you.
Anybody else like to speak for or against this request? Anybody else, please, sir?
I'm familiar with the area also, and my concern is...
State your name for us.
Arthur Hughes. There's one exit out of there coming towards that Popeyes exit, and the other side is, exit is to Tara Boulevard. And it's already a problem when you're trying to get out on that side in front of Popeyes, and I'm just wondering would it hinder emergency vehicles if they had to get in there to take her business, because it's already congested on that side street trying to get out of there. So that was my concern, with another pole in there, where would you place that pole? Near the exit? Where would that pole be positioned near the exit? Because it's already congested when you're trying to get out of there anyway.
Anybody else, sir, if you'd like to come make a rebuttal?
Thank you. If I could adjust this gentleman's concerns first, we have to meet the setbacks that are set forth in the ordinance, and so we have to be off of the streets a certain distance. So that puts us in this area in the parking lot where we are. The compound is situated where there are existing parking spaces now, so we'll be taking up some parking where cars would otherwise be parked. So we're not going to be in an area that otherwise would be free and open for cars to travel through. So I don't think there'd be any difference in the accessibility of going either to Arrowhead or to Tara Boulevard based on where the pole is going to be placed. Also, with regard to the location on the property that this gentleman brought up, we are actually bound by the ordinance and the setbacks that I mentioned before. So getting behind the building was not an option because we can't meet the setbacks of your ordinance. Getting to the side of the building, we're not able to meet the setbacks of the ordinance. So being in the parking lot was our only alternative in order to meet your ordinance. There are eight conditions for conditional use. We've met them all. Staff has agreed that we've met them all. Planning Advisory Board gave us approval with conditions, which we are fine with the conditions. With regard to the aesthetics, as I'm sure Chuck has probably told you, kind of the federal courts have kind of taken that issue out of all of our hands by saying that cell towers cannot be denied by local governments based on aesthetic concerns. So again, not to, you know, belabor and bring out legal issues, but that's just what they have dictated to us. So with that said, I'll be happy to try and answer any other questions.
Do you have this design or poles in any other parking, and what's the closest location?
Well, we have this type of design on those other five towers I showed you, I believe.
Do you have another pole in a parking lot?
Absolutely, we typically put them in parking lots. A lot of times, we run into the setback issues that I mentioned. Sometimes we can put them on side in corners, but we still have to meet the setbacks.
What's the closest one to this location?
In a parking lot?
Yes.
I mean, I'm thinking of several. I mean, within two miles. I mean, there's several in Clayton County. There's dozens of towers in Clayton County.
In the parking lots?
Some of them are, yes, ma'am. I can't think of exactly one right now to quote you an address.
Give me a general area.
Well, south along Tara Boulevard is the one I'm thinking of that is in a parking lot. I believe it's about a mile and a half south. Can't think of the parking lot it's in.
Anything else?
Just any more questions, I'll be happy to try and answer.
Anybody have any other questions? Ms. Ban, what is the conditions?
There, as related to this application, the conditions he's referring to are the standards of the code. There's a section in the code that refers to the development standards, and it's quite detailed on certain developmental standards that are required for all towers to meet, such as the maximum height must not exceed two-hundred-and-twenty feet, that, that any lattice and guy wire type, type towers have to be three-hundred feet away from residential properties. So there, so those are the conditions he was speaking to. There are numerous conditions. As it relates to staff recommended conditions, staff has only recommended a condition that the tower not exceed the hundred-and-twenty-five feet in height, but in addition to that, we have discussed with the applicant, the screening of the facility. They typically screen with a chain link fence. Staff has suggested that they use a solid, a solid fence, a wooden barrier perhaps, that would eliminate any visual into the compound. Only thing would be seen would be the monopole that would protrude into the sky. The maximum height of that fence would be eight feet, and I believe it would provide the necessary security that they would need for that facility. So the only conditions addressed would be the height and the fencing to screen in the compound.
Which we agreed to.
I know you said that it will take up some parking spaces. How close can the, will a car be, I guess, legit as far as parking?
You mean the spaces remaining? How close can the cars park to it?
Yes.
There's a shot there. If I could, I'll point to where the proposed site is on that screen. Give you a better idea. So the proposed site is right in this area right here over some of these parking lots. So the cars will be able to park beside it, but it won't, they won't be able to get inside the compound and up against the equipment.
Any other questions? All right, here are none. Is there a motion for or to approve or not to approve? Anyone have a motion? Well, I will make a motion at this time to approve. Is there a second? Is there a second? All right, dies due to lack of a second. Thank you. Do we need executive session?
Yes, it won't take as long as it'll take you to walk down there, though, I promise. One question on litigation matter.
All right. We need to have an executive session for litigation. Is there a motion?
So moved.
I'll second the motion. Those who favor I?
Aye.
Opposed, is unanimous. Thank you all for coming. All right, motion to reconvene.
Uh, so moved.
Is there a second? I'll second the motion. Those who favor I?
Aye.
Opposed, is unanimous. Madam Clerk?
The board will now hear public comments. Citizens would be given three minutes maximum time limit to speak before the Board of Commissioners. Please state your name and count of residency for the record. Speak clearly into the microphone, and speaker should be courteous, respectful, and not make any disparaging remarks or use abusive language when addressing the board.
Linda Jones.
Good afternoon. My name is Linda Jones.
Good evening.
I live in unincorporated Ellenwood. I'm going to start by saying thank you in advance for letting me speak and for listening to my comments, and also want to say happy Thanksgiving to you. Three phases of Anvil Block Road from Highway forty-two to Boulder Crest Road, as I see it, are past. Anvil Block Road from Morland Avenue leading to Boulder Crest consisted of clean, large, established residential properties and agricultural land. In two thousand and three, Ellenwood Town Center redevelopment plans parts one and two were proposed for District One in Clayton County. That's past. Present, there are small businesses, a few houses, section one station, Walmart, two gasoline stations, eighteen wheelers who park along roadways, as well as retail parking lots, trash and debris throughout Anvil Block Road from Morland Avenue leading up to Boulder Crest Road. That's the present. Future, we want more clean, mixed-use, family-friendly zoning with relatable revenue-producing projects that do not include trucking companies, warehouses, gasoline stations, or other toxic-producing companies for short or long-term zoning in Clayton County in District One. We want continuance of the two thousand and three redevelopment plans parts one and two for District One. There are many communities in Ellenwood who want to continue collaborations with planning, zoning, economic development, the Board of Commissioners, and other offices to build a greater relationship, which we believe will affect healthier, safer, and a better quality of life for us. So we submit signatures of residents from these communities. Also, we would like for you to consider including Goodman's Light Architectural Firm, who has a minority partner, as a future building and design prospect. The firm designed Mercedes-Benz Stadium, Louisville Walker Center, Port of Sanford Center, and many other buildings in Georgia. This firm could add diversity to the list of resources for Clayton County. We appreciate your concern for the citizens in the county, and we look forward to a continued cohesive partnership for the good of all constituents.
Thank you, ma'am. And before I call the next person up, I felt I mentioned this earlier, but Clayton County's birthday is November thirtieth.
Yay!
We were established in eighteen fifty-eight, and I thank my good friend, Mr. Mickey Garber, for making sure he brought that to my attention, so thank you, sir. But yes, it is Clayton County's one hundred and sixtieth birthday. We've been around for a while. Timothy Von Dell Jefferson.
We need to celebrate Clayton Day. We need to agree. Yes, sir.
Timothy Von Dell Jefferson, unincorporated Clayton County. Good evening, Chairman, Commissioners. Wish you guys a happy Thanksgiving. I have some genuine concerns. I have three of them, and try to get through them as quickly as I possibly can with the time limitations. The number one thing is that I was at a development authority meeting this evening, and prior to the meeting starting, the board members were dismayed and kind of shocked that Ricky Clark was removed from the board. None of the board members requested his removal, and as I did my due diligence and did my research, there was no justification for his removal, and we're talking about the alarm tag. There are many communities in Ellenwood who want to continue that collaborations with planning, zoning, economic development, the Board of Commissioners, and other offices to build a greater relationship, which we believe will affect healthier, safer, and a better quality of life for us. So we submit signatures of residents from these communities. Also, we would like for you to consider including Good Vance Lite Architectural Firm, who has a minority partner, as a future building and design prospect. The firm designed Mercedes-Benz Stadium, Little Walker Center, Port of Sanford Center, and many other buildings in Georgia. This firm could add diversity to the list of resources for Clayton County. We appreciate your concern for the citizens in the county. And we look forward to a continued cohesive partnership for the good of all constituents.
Thank you, ma'am. And before I call the next person up, I failed to mention this earlier. Um, but Clayton County's birthday is November thirtieth.
Yay!
We were established in eighteen fifty-eight. And I thank my good friend, Mr. Mickey Garber, for making sure he brought that to my attention. So thank you, sir. But yes, it is Clayton County's one-hundred-and-sixtieth birthday. We've been around for a while. Uh, Timothy Von Dale Jefferson.
Timothy Von Dale Jefferson, unincorporated Clayton County. Good evening, Chairman, Commissioners. Wish you guys a happy Thanksgiving. I have some genuine concerns. I have three of them and try to get through them as quickly as I possibly can with the time limitations. The number one thing is that, uh, I, uh, was at a Development Authority meeting this evening. And, uh, prior to the meeting starting, um, the board members were dismayed and kinda shocked that Ricky Clark was removed from the board. None of the board members requested his removal. And as I, uh, did my due diligence and did my research, uh, uh, there was no justification for his removal. And we talking about the alarm tax property taxes, not justified in the bylaws that it require for the authority rules and regulations. So, uh, we are genuinely concerned as citizens. My phone been blowing up a hook because a lot of people were confused. And, uh, we are trying to get some clarity as to why or who instructed, uh, Commissioner Hambrick to put that on the agenda for his removal. We just trying to get some clarity on that particular issue. The second issue that I have some genuine concern about, I did an open recus- request for all of Mr. Wade Starr's outgoing and incoming emails, um, from July to the present. And in that tobacco, I go through the process. I, uh, get, give the form to Mrs. Davis. Mrs. Davis sends it to legal. And this is where I think it gets convoluted. Chuck Reed is the Housing Authority Attorney, and he's also the county attorney. Typically, uh, because it's a separate entity, the Housing Authority, where Mr. Wade Starr is the director, that open records request generally is forwarded to that particular department. So now, I am confused as to how and why do I have to go through two or three steps in order to get an open recus- request, get it to the person that I requested the open records on? And thirdly, I had a couple of clients call me in confusion. The Authority has a website up and it's showing that Michael Edmerson is still the chairperson. And I have not been to a meeting where he was voted back in as a chair, but all the other individuals who are on that board are correctly stated. So I, uh, want to get some clarity on that as to why, uh, he's still on the website as the chairman of that authority. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Alvin Farmer.
Alvin Farmer, unincorporated Clayton County. Uh, I'm still talking about my recycling information. You will see, no, that's for the two people that are missing. They can pass that on. You can see that, uh, I did some research on this. I was watching TV. They says, for all the stuff that could be recycled, if you could put it in sandbags, five, uh, sandbags high, that it would cover every inch of property that has a ocean or a sea. But, yeah, an ocean or a sea. So that's why people are doing that. I just came from Wilson North Clonan, which is the place that I was born at. They have a great recycling program, and they're doing things, they even have a recycling mascot that they are pushing this area to, uh, be recycled. I did a paper one time on waste management, that they was collecting plastic bottles. They made six million dollars off of plastic bottles, and they turned them into ski equipment. So I think the county need to look at that. A lot of us are talking about the trash in the area. One of the things I do is volunteer at Panhandle Park 'cause I like football and also when the kids playing football. And there's a lot of plastic bottles going into the, uh, waste in that area also. And I think we can do a, uh, better job of doing, uh, waste management. Cause, oh, another thing Fulton County, I heard them on the video, I mean, on the TV also, that they are, uh, starting to collect, uh, plat- uh, uh, bottled, uh, 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 not bottles, yeah. What they call it? Uh, uh, glass bottles and starting to do that. So a lot of people doing that. And I gave you the name and the number, Orange County Recycling, that I went to, that I first came in California. And y'all can call them. And I'm still doing some more research and bringing you more information, and I'll do that because it's a job-making thing, a money-making thing, a clean-making thing. It's a win-win situation. Thank you and have a good day.
Thank you. Christopher Gallagher.
Evening Commissioners, Christopher Gallagher, Clayton County. Uh, we've had a problem where there were the Eden Fresh Market that runs off of North Bridge there. I've called up, uh, Code Enforcement about it. As you turn right off of North Bridge there, there's not a street name because it runs in the parking lot there, but there's an embankment that runs down to your right there. And to your left is the Family Dollar. And there's washing machines thrown down there. Huge old big-screen TVs, struts, tires, debris there. And I've been complaining about it. Uh, they, they haven't done anything about it. I used the Click Clayton County there, which, you know, you put in the address and it keeps changing it on you there. I put the closest location was the Family Dollar. And my phone number, if they had a problem about it and explained it, they sent me back a thing that the case had been closed out and satisfied there. Not a single thing has been removed there, and, and it's just growing there. But I mean, it, it, it's bad. They're gonna need to clean it up there with all the garbage there. It's bringing rats and everything.
Okay, you said some, is it on private property?
We have to go see which, who owns that.
Yeah, so as you turn off North Bridge right before the four-way stop sign, you turn right and you're going into the parking lot there. There's like an empty lot to your left there. And then there's the embankment, and they're dumping stuff for in the embankment. And you go a little farther, and then you have the Family Dollar store. And then you have the Eden Fresh right there. So they're just pulling up here, nobody's around, dumping washing machines and everything over the embankment. Bags of garbage, cuttings, car parts, tires, you, you name it.
Okay. I haven't, this is the first I've heard of it. I wish you would've called me on it. I'm so sorry.
I got through Code Enforcement about it there, but they had it closed there and that. But everything is, uh, Ring had reached out to me. They're trying to work with law enforcement there. Deputy Chief Danikis there in Victor Hill. I went and I gave them something on it, but they're reaching out and they want supply videos and work with law enforcement there. Register with them, so if a crime happens in the area, they could check to see who's video cameras around there. Maybe they could, uh, supply that to them. They have a subsidy program where they like to get involved with counties there. Maybe the county puts in ten thousand dollars. And the people that can't afford to buy them can, you know, buy and purchase some of them. It's usually about two-hundred homes there that could get them. But they wanna work with a lot of the counties. It's a new law enforcement program they're working with. And they're trying to get the counties involved there. Commissioner Warner, I just emailed a little of that to you tonight there.
Okay, good.
But they really wanna work with the county and with our law enforcement. They've done it in different states, and they say that really has helped impact their crime there and solved a lot of cases.
Well, Mr. Chair, if I may address it, um, the only reason I said that, 'cause I know we communicate quite a bit.
Right.
But, um, and I shop at the Eden Fresh, and I haven't seen it. But I might not be looking close enough, but we will definitely, um, see what's going on with it.
You have to look over the embankment, and you'll see they have one of those real old-time big TVs, like they used to have the projector ones and that. And, uh, there's a waterway that runs down below there, so include that also.
And we'll check into the Click Clayton out, 'cause that's not the first time I've heard that about some issues. So I'll definitely follow back up with it.
Yeah, I could spend thirty minutes trying to get a proper address in there, and then it changes it.
Yeah, we'll send somebody out to evaluate it tomorrow. Thank you, sir. Mickey Garber.
Commissioner Warner, I'm not gonna apologize for my facial expression or my body language. Mickey Garber, unincorporated Rex, Georgia. The topic of my conversation today is litter. We all here are aware of our problem in this area. We all here recognize the multi-facets of the problem and the multi-facets of its solutions. At the top of the list of solutions to our litter problem, it has been recognized by Chairman Turner as being education. Moving on in the conversation, two days ago, Channel Five News had a segment highlighting a pastor in South DeKalb County, which borders Clayton, who dedicated the Sunday service to cleanliness is next to godliness. The pastor and all the members of the congregation went out in the church neighborhood to pick up litter. In short, I must say, this is leading by example. Again, moving on in the conversation, this segment is dedicated to Commissioner Hambrick. I went up Interstate five-seventy-five in Cherokee County. And all along the route was signage that read, "Keep Georgia and Ch- Cherokee County Clean." Signage was sponsored by such people as the Cherokee County Cattlemen's Association, such people as Home Depot of Canton, such people as Piedmont Hospital of Cherokee County. You are an, uh, Ms. Hambrick, Commissioner Hambrick, you are an advocate for keeping Riverdale clean, but not an advocate for keeping Clayton County clean by denying proper funding for our chapter of keeping Clayton County clean. As you all know, I'm a world traveler. And I went to Durango, Colorado to get these few words. There are at least three good reasons for keeping clean. One is for help. Another is to merit the respect and liking of other people. And a third is for the sake of our own self-respect. Are there any questions?
Thank you, sir.
Thank you for the opportunity.
All right, Madam Clerk, there ends public comment. There being no other business before this board, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved, Mr. Chair.
I'll second the motion. Those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Pose is unanimous.